Good evening and thank you for joining us tonight at our City Council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Here.
Bray?
Here.
Cheatham?
Here.
Johnston?
Here.
Lurick?
Here.
Manon?
Here.
Here, thank you. If you'd please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which if you would remain standing for an invocation which will be offered by, is it Rogelio Campos, a representative of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Doesn't look like we've got him here, so we will...
A moment of silence.
Have a moment of silence. Thank you. To move on to the Agenda Item Number Three is a Consent Agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, the eating matter listed can be moved to a separate Agenda Item. A, Minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the April 6, 2018 Budget Development Meeting, the April 19, 2018 Clarification Meeting, and the regular Council Meeting. B, Treasurer's Report. Council may wish to consider the Treasurer's Report for April showing cash and investments as of April 30, 2018. Good evening, Ashley, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Ashley Welsh, Senior Accountant in Finance Department. Going to go over the Treasurer's Report for the month of April 2018. There was total cash and cash equivalents of city monies totaling $43,298,210. Total long-term investments, $4,620,74, for a total of $47,918,284. The amount is down $146,046 for the month of April. On page two of the report, we have highlighted key receipts for the month. We received a transit grant for state of $36,973. A fire donation for the purchase of a hazmat trailer, $85,000. Transit grant for federal, $106,628. We also received a franchise fee from Idaho Power for $124,355, which was down about 2 percent from last year. We received Idaho State liquor tax for $133,347. That was up almost 7 percent from last year. We also received Idaho State sales tax revenue sharing in the amount of $540,798. That was up about 6 percent. And Idaho State highway user fees of $664,767, which was up a little over 1 percent. The remaining section details the net change in cash and long-term investments for this city. Page three of the report is for the trust funds. There is a total cash and cash equivalent of $1,106,900. Total long-term investments of $4,273,142, for total cash, cash equivalents of long-term investments of $5,379,152. Total cash receipts for the month are $29,735. Total cash dispersals for the month are $54,843, for a net change of $58,202, and an overall decrease to trust funds of $83,310. The next page lists all funds' cash balances with their respective net change for the month. So as you can see, the General Fund has $10,275,725, for a net decrease of $764,506, but still in a very healthy position. Page five is Discussion Analysis for Your Review. And then Page Six is a Five-Year Trend of Cash Balances. This report continues to reflect a very strong cash position for the city. You can see that there are three negative funds. We have Transit Urban Fund, which was negative $91,223, which is just waiting for pending grants. The Debt Service Fund is negative $29,693. We are waiting for tax remittances to come in to cover that balance. And then the CDBG Fund is $49,585, just waiting for pending grants. And that's the end of my report.
Any questions for Ashley? Thank you, Ashley. We'll move on to C, Animal Shelter Advisory Board Reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the reappointment of Brandy Jacobia to continue her service as a member of the Animal Shelter Advisory Board. Ms. Jacobia's term will begin June 6, 2018, and will expire June 6, 2020. D, Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Advisory Committee Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Nanette Seaman to serve as a member of the CDBG Advisory Committee, replacing Alexandria Toscellini, who resigned. Ms. Seaman's term will begin May 18, 2018, and will expire January 1, 2021.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by President Johnston and a second by...Cheatham. It's been a long day, man, it gets longer and longer. 50's killing me. It's been a long night.
Nature of hell, aren't we?
They are. They are. Could you please call the roll?
Johnston?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
I am sorry. And Ralph. We'll move on to Agenda Item Four and hopefully pass that one up. Communication and Proclamations. We have no proclamations, but I did see some scouts walk in, so could we get one of you to stand up and tell us where you're from?
We're from Troop 199.
Troop 199. Thank you very much for being here. Appreciate it. Do we have any other scouts out there? We have a journalist, we should have him introduce himself, but we won't. Okay, then we'll move on to Agenda Item Five is a Calendar Review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On May 31 at 9:00 a.m. will be a budget meeting. On June 7 at 10:00 a.m. will be a budget meeting. At 5:30 p.m. will be a clarification meeting, and at 6:00 p.m. will be a regular Council meeting. All three of those meetings will be on June 7. June 21 meeting has been canceled. Mayor and City Council will attend Association of Idaho Cities Conference. Other events, Ross Park Aquatic Center opens Saturday, May 26, weather permitting. City offices will be closed Monday, May 28 for Memorial Day holiday. However, garbage and recycle pickups will be on schedule. Brady Chapel Open House at Mountain Home Cemetery, Mountain View Cemetery, to be held on Monday, May 28, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Field of Heroes at Century High School will be May 26 through May 29. Dog licenses on sale for half price through the end of May. Congratulations to all area high school graduates. Okay, we will move on to Agenda Item...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
You missed one important proclamation there. One important announcement.
Oh, the...yeah, you want to make that announcement for us?
Today is Brian Blatt's birthday.
Oh. I thought you were gonna... Oh, my goodness. I thought you were gonna talk about it being law enforcement appreciation or something like that. I wouldn't have said anything. Go ahead. All right, thank you.
You don't have to guess the age.
Yeah, it's pretty obvious.
It's the second anniversary, anniversary of your 25th.
25th birthday, that's right. I'm halfway to 100, so that's good. All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Six. Confirm Appointment of Public Transit Director, ADA Coordinator, Beebe. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Skylar Beebe as the Public Transit Director, ADA Coordinator. Mr. Beebe will start his position on May 18, 2018.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the appointment of Skylar Beebe as the Public Transit Director and ADA Coordinator for the city of Pocatello.
Second.
We have a motion by President Johnston and a second by Adamson. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
I think we ought to have Skylar at least stand, so that everyone...
Skylar, why don't you stand up so we can see you? Do you have your 20-minute speech ready?
30.
30 minutes. Well, that's good. We're glad you have it ready. You go ahead and hold on to that thing. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Seven is a Public Hearing, Verizon Wireless Request for Conditional Use Permit. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding your request from Verizon Wireless, represented by Todd Doush of Digital Skylines Incorporated to install a 50-foot monopole for wireless communications at the end of East Elm Street at Interstate 15 on city-owned property next to the existing water tank. I declare the public hearing open. Do we need to see about expertise?
Yes, sir.
Council, have you, anyone had any expertise communication contact?
No.
Okay, thank you. Ben?
I didn't even speak to him when he came in.
What? I did for a second. He didn't convince me of anything, though, I'm just gonna put that out there.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members, and happy birthday.
Thank you.
For your record, my name is Todd Doush with Visual Skylines, 11340 North 105th Place in Scottsdale, Arizona. I'd like to thank you once again for the opportunity to discuss the development of a proposed 50-foot monopole on city property located at the end of East Elm Street and Interstate 15. I'd also like to thank staff for the thorough report in describing the merits of the site, setbacks, the buffering, the scale of the facility relative to existing improvements, and the passive use of the proposed facility consistent with utility use that currently exists on-site. Staff, as I mentioned, has done a very thorough job in summarizing the proposal, and in the report it also covers the search hierarchy that I undertook in arriving at the proposed site. There were no existing towers within a half-mile of the proposed facility, which the ordinance currently requires. More, we did investigate existing buildings in the area of the proposed site. We looked at the medical center, and in layman's terms, the site is simply too big for Verizon's needs. The technology relies online of site, but in instances where a site has excessive height, it tends to interfere with the other sites within the network, because it wants to try and cover the user, cover the user equipment in other service areas where other cell sites are located. We also looked at the Holiday Inn, which is too far north to address our coverage objective at Interstate 15, excuse me, and Center Street. We did look at Hampton Inn and spent quite a considerable amount of time with TKO motels in arriving at a design that was suitable for them, that unfortunately was at odds with Verizon's needs in terms of azimuth of antennas and locations of those antennas relative to the roofline and other structures on the roof. So unfortunately, we're not able to come to terms with that owner on the development of the site as it pertained to the design. We also looked at small cells. The cell site, or the proposed cell site, rather, is supposed to cover all the quadrants near the intersection of Interstate 15 and Center Street. Because of the topography, because of land tenures, and because of large swaths of rights of way associated with Interstate 15, the development of small cell network in that area was deemed unfeasible. It was just too big of an undertaking with respect to rights of way and citing on federal property, and it would have required an inordinate number of small cell sites that arguably had a larger visual impact than the site that is before you. Ultimately, we decided that the proposed site, or at least in our opinion, was considered the best option to address the Verizon Wireless gap in coverage, and does so in the least intrusive means to the overall public. It's due in large part to the location of the site, it's very remote. It does enjoy buffering because of its location adjacent to Interstate 15. There's also buffering to the south because of the land tenure that is in the parcels that are owned by the Idaho Department of Transportation in the state of Idaho. And the terrain, there's some steep terrain to the west and to the north that mitigates the visual impact of the site to residences in those directions. With that, I behalf to answer any other questions you may have regarding the proposal.
Does this in any way differ from what you talked to us about at the study session a couple of months ago?
Mayor Blatt, Councilman Cheatham, no, it does not. It is still consistent with what was proposed during the study session in March.
Any questions? That's good, thank you.
Thank you.
Then, staff, Matt.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Happy birthday, Mayor.
Thank you.
You don't look a day over 50.
Not till tomorrow.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Matthew Lewis, I'm Senior Planner with the Plan and Development Department. The request before you is subject to Municipal Code Section 1542.090. This section allows new towers not in public rights of way through the conditional use permit process only on city property with a public hearing before the City Councils. The council allowed Todd Doush with Digital Skylines to apply for a conditional use permit to possibly place a 50-foot-high monopole with attending equipment on city property after a study session held on March 8, 2018. Subject property is owned by the city of Pocatello, covering 2.6 acres, includes a 3-million-gallon water tank. Tank is visible from I-15, but is difficult to see from properties to the west because of steep hillside of over 30 percent grade. The tower and equipment will be placed approximately 30 feet northwest of the water tank. Proposal calls for a lease area of 750 square feet. Facility is intended to provide better cellular coverage for the targeted area mainly north and south along I-15 corridor and Center Street. This is shown in the Before and After Coverage Map, specifically Exhibit 2. Staff finds that the applicant conducted due diligence to avoid the need to place the monopole by considering other options such as co-location, placement of equipment on buildings, or small cell technology. Notice of the application was published in the Idaho State Journal, sent to property owners within 300-foot radius of the subject property, and a sign was posted at the terminus of East Elm, giving notice of the hearing. As of tonight's meeting, please note that staff has not received any correspondence either in support of, neutral to, or in opposition of the requests. Staff finds the proposal is in compliance with municipal, with Pocatello Municipal Code, assuming conditions listed in the staff report on that. Following close of the public hearing, the council may wish to, one, approve the conditional use permit with recommended staff conditions and direct the legal department staff to prepare a lease agreement, or, secondly, deny the application as the location of the proposed tower and attending equipment may not be in the public's best interest. With that, that concludes my presentation. Mayor and Council will be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, council? Thank you. Thank you. Is there, have we received any written correspondence?
No, sir.
Okay. Then we would look for any testimony of those supporting the application. Any testimony of those uncommitted to the application. Any testimony of those opposed to the application. Okay? Then I would give you an opportunity to say anything else if you'd like to, but...
Since I've enjoyed the cooperation from the city in not only this proposed site, but the proposed site at the Pocatello Regional Airport, since you've been a great partner to Verizon Wireless, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay, then I declare the public hearing closed. Council decides before you how you wish to proceed. Councilman Bray?
Mayor, I move that we approve the request for a conditional use permit at this location with all the conditions and recommendations applying.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Bray and a second by Manon. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Eight, Short Platte Hawthorne Meadows Subdivision. Dave Packer, represented by Rocket Mountain Engineering and Surveying, has submitted a short platte to subdivide 3.20 acres, more or less, into two residential lots. The subdivision is located south of Quinn Road and east of Hawthorne Road and is to be known as Hawthorne Meadows. Staff finds the application meets the standards of Pocatello Municipal Code Title 16, providing recommended conditions are met.
Mr. Mayor, I would announce that I am going to recuse myself for any discussion or voting on this item.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
I move that we approve the request, subject to the conditions in the staff report.
Second. We have a motion by Adamson and a second by Bray. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Recused.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Nine, Zoo Idaho Zoological Society Roar and Pour Wine Event Fundraiser. Council may wish to consider approving the following request from the Zoo Idaho Zoological Society, ZIZ, represented by Jennifer Urchell, in regards to their annual Roar and Pour Wine Walk event to be held on June 16, 2018, at Zoo Idaho. A, ZIZ seeks permission to allow individuals to remain in the zoo until 10:00 p.m. City Ordinance 12.36.20 states that city parks close one hour after sunset, and B, an exception to City Ordinance 12.36.050 to allow wine to be served by licensed vendors at the event. If the exception is granted, ZIZ will obtain all necessary permits related to the event. Vendors are donating the wine to be served at the Wine Walk, and C, ZIZ seeks continued approval for the annual events and associated exceptions to City Ordinance 12.36.020 and 12.36.050 in future years, subject to the Parks and Recreation Director's review, and barring any significant change or changes to the event. Councilman Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the Zoological Society's request for the Roar and Pour Wine Event, and that includes approving items A, B, and C.
Second.
So we have a motion by Bray and a second by Lurick. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Ten, Extension Request, Bannock County Wellness Complex. Council may wish to consider a request from Bannock County Commissioners to extend the due date requiring water connection to the wellness complex well. The county is in the process of working with Idaho Department of Water Resources regarding the well. The water will be used to irrigate the event center soccer fields. Councilman Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we extend our water use agreement with Bannock County through this irrigation season or until they are able to supply their own irrigation source for the wellness center. The only change will be that they must pay this year's rate.
This year's rate, okay.
Second.
I second.
We got one over here. So we got a motion by Bray and a second by Adamson. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Okay, thank you. Agenda Item Eleven, Airport Professional Services Agreement, TO Engineers. Council may wish to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a professional services agreement between the city and TO Engineers for work on this year's 2018 Airport Improvement Project, AIP, for the following projects. A, taxi lane and rehabilitation. B, wildlife hazard assessment and plan. C, replacement of ARF, A-R-F-F, crash alarm system, and D, procurement of snow removal plow truck. TO will perform bid processing, grant application and closeout, and some design, as well as project and construction management for the above referenced projects. The fee is not to exceed $276,695.35, and is eligible for 93.75 percent reimbursement from the FAA, with the remaining 6.25 percent funded using airport passenger facility charge funds. The project is contingent upon grant award.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Cheatham?
I move approval of Agenda Item Number Eleven, the Airport Professional Services Agreement with TO Engineers, as outlined. I'll second that.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Johnston. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Twelve, Personnel Services Contract, Emergency Service Consulting International. Council may wish to approve a Personnel Services Contract with Emergency Services Consulting International, ESCI, to create a long-range master plan for the fire department as presented at the March 8, 2018 study session. The total project cost is $51,465, and will be shared between the city of Pocatello, $33,644, and Bannock County Ambulance, $17,822. The fire department is asking permission to use capital contingency funds for the project. Councilman Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve this personal service contract, and that we understand that we are granting permission for the fire department to use contingency funds for the airport.
Second.
For the, for the contingency funds for the...
For this contract.
The master plan.
Master plan.
Who was the second?
Jim.
Jim was?
Johnston, that on the end.
That one, that one on the end? I gotta remember his name, too. We have a motion by Bray and a second by Johnston. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Thirteen, Momentum Recycling Contract, Glass Recycling. Council may wish to consider approval of a glass recycling contract between the city of Pocatello and Momentum Recycling, as presented at the April 12, 2018 study session, subject to legal department review.
Could we have a brief explanation in terms of what this is for the viewing public?
Sure.
He's got notes. His speech is probably 30 minutes, too.
It is 30 minutes. You messed this up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tom Kirkman, Deputy Public Works Director. It's actually 45 minutes. I can trim it to 30 if you'd like.
He said brief.
That's, I whittled it down from an hour, so I could bloviate for a long time.
That's right.
So this is the contract between Momentum Recycling out of Salt Lake City. They're going to be the location where the recycled products will be taken to. They use it to make glass, fiberglass insulation, as well as silicone sand. The contract states that they will come and haul the glass off when we're ready for it to be disposed of at no cost, or we have the ability to haul it ourselves at a cost of $25 a ton. So the recycling program kicks off June 4. The sanitation staff has done a remarkable job. They've got the containers ready. Within the next few days, you'll start to see a lot of press release, a lot of movement on this. It's something we're really excited about, and I just can't say enough how much the staff at sanitation has done a wonderful job on it.
So talk about the benefits in terms of...
So the great benefits for this, first and foremost, is it's environmentally friendly. It's the right thing to do. Second of all, every piece of glass we keep out of the landfill is less, takes up the space of landfill, as well as saves us money. That's less that we're hauling to the landfill to pay a premium for. It saves energy, it creates jobs. It's just a win-win deal for everybody.
So we'll have another cart at our homes?
So they will have dumpsters at certain locations throughout town, and we'll get those out to the public in the next few days. There will be a brown dumpster that sanitation crews have worked over and made it for glass recycling. It's a really neat, neat design that they came up with, and we'll have those dispersed throughout town. We'll get that list out to the public, and so you can drop off your glass. I think the only things is porcelain and mirrors, and there will be information of what you can and can't put in those. what you can and can't put in those.
Thank you very much.
Have you followed through on the idea of pat me?
We have not. We have not.
We, at the study session, you talked about still arranging some of the drop-off locations. Have those been finalized?
Yes, I believe they finalized most of them. We're still working on one or two. We're looking for some prime real estate on the north side of town a little bit, so we're still working on a few of those.
Super.
Right now on the flyer, we've got Syste Shuriti Park, the wellness complex, City Hall, Ridley's on Main, Albertson's, Union Pacific Railroad Lot, ISU, Costco, and I believe there's a few more that we'll update this with.
Super. That's in quite a few of them. That's great. Thank you.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Adamson.
I would move that we approve the contract for glass recycling subject to legal review.
A second.
We have a motion by Adamson and a second by Lurick. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 14, Discussion Items. This time has been set aside to hear discussion items not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action meetings at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. As a reminder, there is a three-minute time limit and a 15 minutes total for this agenda item. We'll go ahead and get started. Dr. Mike Riley. Looks like we got a mic up here for you again. We keep scooting you closer and closer to us. I'm not sure...
Well, it's... I like, I'm the same age. I'm actually a couple weeks older than you are.
All right.
It's all downhill from here.
Thanks for the confidence.
Okay. Last Friday, Marshall was attacked by a loose dog on campus across the street from Goodies Deli, and I would like to just remind people to control your pets and keep them away from us. His sense of purpose comes from the work that he does, and he can't do his work if he's being interfered with. My policy has always been to try to work with the other handler to avoid situations in the future, but when somebody's standard poodle gets away from them and attacks him when he's walking down a ramp, there's not much that I can do to stop that. So my new policy is to call the police department and have them intervene, and I will call 911. It's unfortunate that I have to do that, but I don't have a choice, because he's the other half of the equation, and I just can't have people's dogs attacking him. And so I need to, we need to remind people to control their animals. That's one thing. And before my time is up, I also need to ask, if you've got an animal in a vehicle and you're approaching a crosswalk that I happen to be waiting to cross, don't let your animal try to get out of the back of the truck to attack him, or lean out the window and bark and growl at him. That's some other issues that we need to work on as a community. And keep in mind, the police department, the animal control, they can't do all this. This requires me being a good steward and a good handler, but also I need my fellow pet owners to understand that he has a job to do and we need to be left alone. So I've got to be honest with you, I'm tired of talking about this. But, you know, I always try to put my best foot forward, even though I can't walk, and come up with a solution that's going to work with it. And the concern is, I don't want him thinking that every dog he comes across is going to attack him. So we, as a community, need to put the brakes on this before it gets out of control. So thank you very much for listening to me.
So Mike, just a minute. We have a couple questions.
I'm going to give you a little extension on your time. We talked prior to this, and you mentioned how these dogs have to concentrate on the task they're trained for, and there are dogs that are trained to notice when people are going through a seat, anticipating a seizure, and how it could interfere with their dog doing the duty, or somebody that's epileptic to interrupt and get them notified of that pending seizure.
That's right. That's one of the things. There's also dogs in the city that I know of that help an individual with a blood pressure issue, and they provide physical assistance. Should her blood pressure drop to a certain level and she becomes faint, the dogs there to physically assist her in not hitting the floor. I mean, yeah, my dog does some visual stuff, and he does some retrieving dropped items, and he can, you know, do everything short of reading the mail. I mean, he can push automatic door buttons. I showed one of the mayor's staff, I showed him out here twice how to open the doors to let us out, and he can do it consistently. I mean, it's those kinds of essential life tasks that need not be interfered with, and I hate to say to people, if your dog attacks mine, I'm going to call the police, but what other choice do I have? He's got to focus on the job that he has, because if he's so distracted by other people's pets, he can't really zero in on what he's supposed to be doing. Whether it's getting us across the street safely, whether it's retrieving a dropped item. I verbally warned the dog away, and the dog didn't respond to my verbal cue to go away. And I, as the alpha of the group, were not able to convince the dog to leave us alone. So I don't know what the answer is. I can't outrun the dog. I can't run at all.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm being a little facetious here, but I'm really irritated, and I'm trying to be nice about it, but I'm fresh out of options, and if I could move out of Poquetto somewhere else tomorrow, I would do that.
Council President Johnston.
Mr. Mayor, we already have on the books legislation where dogs are to be on leashes when they're out and about. I'm not sure what else we can do as a city council, other than try and educate people as you're doing with us.
Well, Jim, you're not wearing a body camera so you can see the evidence for yourself. I don't know what to do. I could write PRT, I could write door-to-door service, but then you have critics out there that say that it's not a needed service, and then my, and then my very energetic male law gets too fat because he's not getting enough exercise. It's just, I've got to be able to move throughout the city like anyone else without him being interfered with.
And we're in favor of that. That's no question, but can we legislate everything?
No, because then people think that we're becoming a dictatorship rather than a community, and I don't want that. I know people love their pets, but just control them and keep them away from us. That's all.
How about we could put together a pretty good commercial and get that put out? Maybe we should talk with Logan about that.
Something's got to change, folks, because, you know, my last dog had to retire two years early because she got viciously attacked six times in 10 years.
So I know you've been here a number of times, and we appreciate you coming back and talking to us about this, you know, and it is, it's a matter of educating the public, and I'll tell the council that Mike has been with us and worked with our police chief and our fire chief on the importance of, when they have an emergency, to respond and what to do with the dog and stuff like that. So Mike really is an advocate, and he's trying to help us and trying to educate as many people as he can. It's just a matter of people recognizing it and doing that, and we'll continue to do what we can do with that, and go on.
Well, you know, ISU Public Safety, I went and visited with them the other day, and I talked with them about what they've been up to since I've been off campus, and they've encouraged people to go off of the quad into Bart's Way and Bart's Field where it's completely legitimate to have dogs off-leash and dogs running about. You'll never see us at a dog park. You'll never see me at Bart's Way, Bart's Field, any of that kind of stuff, because it's too dangerous. I'm not going to put him in a situation, I don't even shop at these pet-friendly places like Home Depot, or Lowe's, or any of the other places that say that they're pet-friendly. You'll never see me in there because I haven't trained all the other dog handlers to properly handle their animals. That sounds arrogant, but it's true. It comes down to improper dog handling. I'm too old, like the mayor, to train everybody, but there's got to be a way to approach this as a community where people don't think, oh, Dr. Riley had me charged with a crime, and I ended up spending time at the Bannock County Jail because I interfered with his service log. I mean, I don't want that kind of reputation. I don't want to get ran out of town, but the reality is, if you interfere with one of these dogs in the performance of their duty, or you have a dog that does that, you can be punished severely for doing that. If you look up the statutes under assistance dog under Idaho law, it's all spelled out there, and I hate to go there, but I'm getting tired of it. I want to come up with a positive solution. People here love their pets. I like that about Poquetto, but I need to be able to work with him without being interfered with.
Absolutely. Okay, super. Thank you. We'll move on to James Myler.
I am James Myler, and I am a concerned citizen of the city of Poquetto, and am very grateful for this opportunity to address the city council and the mayor of Poquetto. I have a concern. I am a person of health problems in many different areas of my life. When I am waiting for a bus, quite often there's somebody smoking right next to me, and for me to get to the bus when it's time, I have to pass through stale cigarette smoke. Even outside, as Wendy's Poquetto is, I still have to pass through this foul air. Many of the bus drivers, I have also heard complain about smoke coming into their cab while they are picking up... Excuse me. The brain loss is also...
Passenger, it's the birthday, probably, is what it is.
So it is, I hope that you would consider taking into your study council meeting an idea of maybe putting a 20-foot radius of non-smoking area around the bus stops so that those of us who are waiting for the bus can at least have some protection from secondhand smoke. And we know that there is plenty of evidence about secondhand smoke, and that's about all I have to say. Again, I thank you for your time, and I hope that you would carry this to a study session.
Super. Thank you. Thank you very much. I think that's a good idea. All right. Thank you. I'd like to thank the council for their work this morning and for the harassment that they've given me throughout the day, and I won't forget it, just so everybody knows that. We appreciate it. Thank you very much. With that, we are adjourned.